How many people are in that club right now?
So does.
Good evening, this is the Coeur d'Alene Planning and Zoning Commission, and this is our May meeting, May 13th, 2014. Shannon, would you do the roll call, please?
Here.
Bowlby?
Here.
Ingalls?
Here.
Luttrell?
Missina?
Here.
Ward?
Connery?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Okay, thanks Shannon. All right, next, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so first of all, we have approval of minutes from the April 8th meeting.
Mr. Chair, I would recommend that the Planning Commission meeting for April 8th, 2014 be accepted.
Second. Okay, motion by Bowlby and a second by Ingalls. And do we have any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so the minutes are approved. Hey, Rick, I'm getting a lot of feedback when I'm trying to talk, maybe you can adjust that, thanks. Okay, thank you. Let's see, public comments, this would be the time if anybody in the audience would like to address the commission, and this would be for an item of general nature other than the hearings tonight, because if you're here for one of the hearings, then you'll have some time at the hearing to address this. All right, seeing none, staff comments?
We do have two items for next month's meeting, June 10th. We've got one special use permit, and then the other item is kind of a bundle with annexation, special use permit, zone change, and PUD. And a subdivision.
Those items are on your agenda tonight, and we'll need to make a motion to continue those to the next meeting, once we get to that point. Another couple of comments, council at the last meeting approved the amendments to the subdivision ordinance, hopefully, I think we have circulated to you a revised copy showing you what the new code looks like.
Okay.
We will get to you as soon as it's codified, the codified version straight out of the code, but that's what we have for the moment. Included in that is some changes to our findings for subdivisions, so we will want to have a sit-down relatively quickly and maybe workshop and work through what that looks like.
So that would be this?
And I think we circulated sort of a revised, or a first draft of a revised finding sheet, so you could see what those new findings look like. The other item, I suppose I should tell you, is we have made an offer for the vacant planner position, that offer's been accepted, and the person should be joining us late next month.
Great. All right, so, we need, let's see, we need a motion to continue the second item, right? Until June 10th?
That's correct.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would motion that Item 2, the Larry Fluid Provocable Trust item, for between I-90 and Lake Villa, on east side of city, be, what's the word, extended until June the 10th?
Continued?
Continued.
I'll second that.
And that would be Items PUD 314, S 614, A 414, and ZC 114.
Okay, so that, let's see, that was the motion by Ingalls and second by Bowlby. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's approved. If by any chance someone here in the audience is here for that hearing, and this is the one for that property over by I-90, kind of east of I-90 and by the Lake Villa apartments behind there?
Lilac Lane.
Lilac Lane, yeah. So that was at the request of the applicant, that's been extended until June 10th. Okay, so we have one public hearing tonight. This is a quasi-judicial, the applicant is Core Development LLC, this is adjacent to the landings at Waterford between Atlas and Hutter, proposed 470-lot preliminary plat known as Aspen Trails, this is S-5-14. Do any commissioners have a conflict to declare? All right, seeing none? Okay, first of all, we'll start with the staff report, and then the applicant will come forward, and then we'll take public testimony. So Tammy, it's all yours, thank you.
Right, thank you. So again, this evening's request is for a 470-lot preliminary plat subdivision known as Aspen Trails. The applicant owner is Core Development, and the request this evening is for the 144 acres to be built in 13 phases with the following elements: 470 lots, zoned R8, the gross density is 3.26 units per acre, 7.5-acre neighborhood park, pedestrian bike trail throughout the development, approximately 16.47 acres of open space for perimeter and buffer landscaping, and the extension of Hanley Avenue from Atlas to Hutter Road. So this is the subject property, this is Hanley Avenue here, and this, you know, this is as far as it's extended at this time, Hutter Road, running north and south, and this is the subject property bisected by the Prairie Trail. Hawksnest subdivision is located in this area, and then the landings is north of the subject property. So in 2006, Hawksnest subdivision was platted into a total of 867 lots. 477 of those lots were developed and have been mostly built on. This proposed subdivision has been reconfigured to replat a 470-lot subdivision. So we'll go through the findings as we typically do. That all of the preliminary plat requirements have or have not been attested to by the city engineer. So per Gordon Dobler, our city engineer, the preliminary plat submitted contains the general information required by Section 1612020 of the Municipal Code General Requirements. And this is the proposed preliminary plat, I believe all of you received a copy of it, an updated preliminary plat from the applicant. As you can see, if you're looking at one of those pages, it's got the number of phases, there's a total of 13 phases, and it lists a total of lots in each phase. This area is where Phase 1 will be, and then it'll go down to Phase 2 and up here, Phase 3. So that's where they're going to begin with the subdivision. That the provisions for the sidewalks, streets, alleys, right-of-way, easements, street lighting, fire protection, planting, drainage, pedestrian and bicycle facilities and utilities are not adequate. So your staff report includes comments from staff, and I'm going to briefly touch upon all of them. So as far as water, there is sufficient capacity in the public water system to provide domestic irrigation and fire flow to the proposed subdivision. There are additional comments detailing that information about fire hydrants and so on, within the subdivision. As far as sewer, based on the preliminary plat stamped and dated 3/2614, most of the concerns have been addressed by the applicant, with the exception of the following: wastewater has provided some information about installing a manhole and other code requirements that we're going to look for before the final plat is approved. As far as stormwater, the city code requires a stormwater management plan to be submitted and approved prior to any construction on the activity of the site, and this would be a typical requirement when we have a preliminary plat come through. As far as traffic, the ITE Trip Generation Manual estimates the project built-out may generate approximately 4,474 trips per day. AM and PM peak hour generation rates could be upward of 360 and 480 trips per day, respectively. And under the evaluation for traffic, it says, "At built-out, adjacent, and connecting streets will accommodate the additional traffic volume." And then as far as streets, the proposed subdivision is bordered by Carrington Lane on the east, and undeveloped Hanley Avenue, right-of-way on the south, and Hutter Road on the west. The evaluation states that the completion of Carrington Lane and the portion of Hanley Avenue from Carrington to, the existing Hanley Avenue to the east, will be required to be completed with the initial construction of the development. It says this connection is required to facilitate traffic flows in and out of the development through a signalized intersection. And then if you go on to the evaluation, it talks about the timing. "Any development designated phasing or park construction that occurs to the south of the Prairie Trail multi-use path will require the construction and completion of the Hanley Avenue connection to Hutter Road." So, engineering requirement has kind of spelled out the timing, and of all these things that should happen as far as development of roads through the subdivision. And then if we skip down to another evaluation talking about roads, Carrington Lane is required to be constructed to a 40-foot street width and a 6-foot bike lane signed and striped on both sides from the street noted as homeward bound south to Hanley Avenue, per the approved city bike plan. Hanley is required to be constructed to a 48-foot street from Talon Lane, westernly, to Hutter Road. And then if we go on, on page 7, talking about subdivision improvements, it talks a little bit about the future intersections of Carrington and Hanley, and that they will both be required to be signalized. So Carrington and Hanley, Hanley and Hutter to be signalized. And then in the evaluation, it speaks to the intersection and the signals that are going to be required at the time Hanley Avenue was constructed, west of Carrington Lane, which will occur with any development south of the Prairie Trail multi-use path. As far as Parks Department, we are requiring the bike paths and trails throughout the subdivision. In addition, the applicant is also going to be required to construct 10-foot bike trail along Hutter Road. If he doesn't do that, then he would need to provide a fee in lieu of, prior to the development on the south side of the Prairie Trail. As far as planning requirements, all lots in the proposed subdivision that are double-frontage lots will have to meet requirements of the code section. That requires at least a 10-foot wide planting screen that must be landscaped in accordance to the Section 1706830 with the buffer yard requirements and standards. So that would be along Hutter Road, some lots along Hanley, and there's a couple other streets. Any of those double-frontage lots would have to have that planting screen. And then the Fire Department included information just on their requirements. That the preliminary plat is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. So this is the subject property, the green denotes a transitional area, and this is the Atlas Prairie District boundary in the solid black, and this is the existing city limits. So the characteristics of the Atlas Prairie Neighborhood are noted in your staff report on page 9. It speaks to the overall density may approach four to five residential units per acre. This proposed subdivision is requesting 3.26 acres per dwelling unit. And comprehensive plan goals and objectives are also included in your staff report on page 9 and page 10. That public interest will or will not be served. For 470-lot subdivision request, Aspen Trails is located within the corporate city limits of Coeur d'Alene. The subdivision, if approved, will provide for a variety of housing options that are compatible with the existing and surrounding developments in the area. The street layout is compatible with the existing roads in the area, and the proposed plat has a residential density of 3.26 dwelling units per acre, as I mentioned earlier. The preliminary plat also provides open space, trails and paths throughout the subdivision, it will also include a park. Finding B8E, that all of the required engineering elements of the preliminary plat have or have not been met, as attested to by the city engineer. So included in your staff report is the utility plan, and the preliminary utility design was provided by the applicant, and it was reviewed by the city engineer, indicating that all the subdivision code's design standards and improvements, and improvement requirements have been approved. So finding B8F, that the lots proposed in the preliminary plat do or do not meet the requirements of the applicable zoning district. So, this is our zoning map, the subject property is currently zoned R8. Property to the east in the original, our underlying plat Hawksnest, is also zoned R8. This is the landings to the north, most of that is zoned R8, you've got a little bit of the R3 zoning district as well. So as I mentioned earlier, Aspen Trails is zoned R8. Minimum lot size in the R8 zoning district is 5,500 square feet. The proposed lots range from a minimum of 6,098 square feet, the average lot size is 7,840 square feet, and the maximum is about 13,000 square feet. I've also included the standards for setbacks and so on in your staff report. There are a few lots in this proposed subdivision that are requested for deviations with frontages that are less than 50 feet. There are other lots that we have previously approved throughout our subdivisions that also went through the deviations from standards. So here are performance standards that I just mentioned, 5,500 square feet minimum lot size. Buildable lots need 50 feet of frontage on a public street unless they're deviated from, which this applicant is requesting a deviation. So finding B9, that the proposal would or would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood at this time with regard to traffic, neighborhood character, and existing uses. So the subject property is zoned R8, development in the area consists of primary residential. When I get to the land use map, you'll see that there is a multifamily project to the north in the landings. The adjacent and connecting streets will accommodate the additional traffic volume. And under streets, the comments from the engineering department were provided by Chris Bates, and talking about the trip generation and accommodating the streets that I skimmed through. So this is the generalized land use map, so you can see the yellow is single-family, and this is the multifamily, and this is kind of orange-brown. So it's primarily single-family in this area. And those are the findings. In your staff report, you'll see there are 19 proposed conditions. The applicant did do a pre-application meeting, which we require for subdivisions, and through the process of developing the staff report, we did send the conditions to them, so they could review them and provide some comments or have a discussion about those. So the applicant is familiar with the conditions that are connected with the staff report. So we mailed 172 notices on April 25th, 2014, and we did receive one comment back in support. And that is all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have some questions for you, Tammy.
Okay.
If you could go back, Tammy, to that, oh, global shot that shows the overall map.
Okay.
Yes. Help me understand, if you would, I guess, PP 3, 4, PP 5, PP 6?
I asked the same question.
Preliminary plat, I'm guessing, so is that suggest that there's going to be four preliminary plats and 13 phases? And I'm seeing heads shaking, no, and so I'm a little bit lost how, what, how that relates to phases?
No, let me answer that question, I asked the same thing. They are spelled out in the phases, how they're going to develop the preliminary plat. Those are just noted in the pages. When they submitted the preliminary plat, they broke them off into sections. I thought it would be probably a little more confusing if I submitted each page separately versus just including the preliminary plat, since you guys have it broken down.
Okay. I'll probably have a couple of questions for city engineer, but to finish a couple with you, Tammy, if I could. Along the Centennial Trail, you talked about double-fronted lots, are those considered double-fronted lots?
They are not, would just be the street frontages.
And are you comfortable with that?
Well, that's what the code specifies, so that's when, the only ones that we would require the buffering is on the double-frontage, which you've got some along Hutter Road, and you've got lots along the extension of Hanley area, and then I believe there's some, gosh, I think it's this area here.
Okay. Two more quick questions of you, and then maybe some for Mr. Dobler later, but I see, you know, up there where it says PP 3, for example, just below the 3, there's a little, right there, a little pocket parky-looking thing. This is not a PUD, but it looks like some effort put into making usable open space?
They did provide some usable open space throughout the subdivision. I was also going to make note of the fact that they'll have to form a homeowner association to do the maintenance on those open space areas.
That's kind of where I was going with the maintenance.
Yeah, the park, the total square foot, or excuse me, the acreage of the park, I believe, is about seven and a half acres, but it also includes some open space area, so I'm thinking it's about 13 acres, and the applicant can provide more information on that.
And a last one for you, the knuckles, I think you covered this, you know, it suggested that wherever there's knuckles, it would be difficult to meet the 50-foot frontage requirement. I thought I heard you say that's a fairly common deviation?
We did recently do that on the subdivision for Lake Forest, there were quite a few of those circumstances where they couldn't meet the frontage requirements, and that's not unusual in those knuckles.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I've got a quick question. Along the trail, didn't, didn't they say there was a buffer along the trail from the lots?
As far as the Prairie Trail?
Yes.
They may have provided a buffer, but it's not a requirement for our screening of double-frontage lots.
Okay, so what, what are they thinking they'll do along that trail? Leave it open to the, to the homes? Or do they want it fenced, or?
That would probably be a good question for the applicant.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? All right, thank you, Tammy.
You're welcome.
Okay, Tom, are you representing yourself, or who's, who's representing your project?
Oh, it's not my brother.
Okay, sorry.
I was going to ask Gordon a couple of questions.
Oh.
Should I do that now, or?
Go ahead.
Gordon, can I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely.
Before the applicant, perhaps, for clarity, maybe using this sketch here, there's a couple spots in this whole packet that talks about, oh, Carrington extension to Hanley. It also talks about the design of the signal at Carrington and Hanley, and if I read it correctly, I think, I saw in the, in the packet, some discussion that said that, you know, that the developer would be required to participate in the design during the, quote, "initial" construction. So, it, it's clear to me that Carrington with the, does initial construction mean Phase 1?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the condition, so there's some discussion in the staff report about, that it's needed, and preliminary, we refined that in the condition that said that signal needs to go in place, really, when they extend Hanley out.
And when was that going to be?
Any construction south of the Prairie Trail.
Okay, so that would be under the first, wouldn't that be under the first phase, second phase?
Oh, I don't have the phasing plan in front of me, but if I remember right, the phasing plan, the first phase is up in here.
Right, the second phase, then, is when it would happen.
It's cleared down to, these, these areas south of the trail are going to be Phase 82. They're later, much later phases.
Well, no, I guess, will the whole top part be built out before they'll have to go all the way to Hanley?
So let's, let me just address that philosophically, and you can ask the applicants, but typically, the way that they develop these, sometimes they hopscotch a little bit, it depends on the kind of product, the kind of lots, you can see the lots are different sizes. So we call out the phasing, but sometimes they don't follow that strictly, which is okay, it's, you know, that conforms to the plat as long as they don't change road configuration.
Right.
And availability of water, so they kind of change their plans as they move along, and we have the flexibility to do that. So that's kind of a long answer to say, more than likely, they won't come to the south side of the Prairie Trail until the very end because of the logistics of getting water and sewer. The sewer comes down Hanley, and they won't want to build that until they have to. So this, this chunk south of the trail carries with it some overburden for utility extension and things.
Well, that, that, okay, I, I'm just confused on how I'm looking at the road structure and the signaling. So that signaling doesn't have to go in until after almost everything's done.
So, yeah, and let me, let me try to explain a little bit more. So initially, they'll be able, they'll be required to bring Carrington down to Hanley. So indulge me for a minute, because this might help clear it up. So when we went over this with them, it became apparent that this is the current Prairie Trail. If they were right now to construct this and tee off Hanley, that means we'd have instantly two crossings of the Prairie Trail for a two-legged intersection. Well, we all collectively thought that may not be the best way to do it. So we had discussions with the applicant about a temporary connection along the north side of the trail in concert with the city, because that's our property, and maybe temporarily pushing the trail to the south that would allow this temporary connection without crossing the trail twice. There's another reason to do that, because the city wants to pursue a tunnel ultimately, putting the trail in a tunnel underneath this intersection. And we need a little time to apply for some grants and get some funding lined up for that. So while it doesn't show up in a lot of discussions or conditions, the conditions are written so that they would allow this to happen. So what could possibly happen is, when they extend Carrington to Hanley, they'll just run along the north side of that Prairie Trail right-of-way, and they really won't have a 90-degree two-legged intersection until the point that they start developing south of the trail, then that hopefully will have lined up money for the tunnel, and it would kick in the condition to extend Hanley. So those conditions were written to mesh all of that together and give them flexibility, give staff time to find some money.
So most of this will go north into the landings for them to ingress egress from the development?
Well, they'll still, with the very first phase, they'll still have a connection from Carrington out to Hanley.
Okay, so that will, that's, that will be pushed out at the very first stage?
Yes, that's what the condition says.
But the lighting won't be there necessarily?
Yeah, and then, that's why, I actually rewrote the condition after some discussions with the applicant, to put the signal, that can require the condition of the signal at this intersection only when Hanley is extended, which pushes the signalize, the design and installation of the signal off to, you know, when the development progresses south of the Prairie Trail. Is that, is that clear?
Well, sort of. I'll, I'll listen to the application, and I'm sure it'll come, the applicant. I'm sure it'll be clear. Thank you.
Okay, is that it? Okay, so, come on up, you have 30 minutes, if you need it. State your name and address at the microphone, and I'll swear you in briefly.
Just the microphone. Mike Curry, 1859 Lakewood Drive, Suite 103, Coeur d'Alene 9083814.
Okay, Mike, and then do you swear, raise your right hand, and you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, so go ahead.
First of all, Tammy said if I took the whole 30 minutes on a day like this...
I said up, I said up too.
Oh, okay.
You don't have to use it all if you don't.
Well, and I gotta say too, you know, the city of Coeur d'Alene made some bold moves over the last couple of years, and a lot of construction going on downtown. I rounded the corner at Independence Point, and there was a guy walking his dog, and he beat me to the library. He got to walk, I had to course detour all over town. You know, I, I've been around and watched the progression of the Hawksnest project for years, and when this developer came to Tri-State, and we began working with them, it became pretty obvious early on that, you know, Hawksnest is, it's, it's hard to come up here and describe what is going on there at Hawksnest, especially with planning and, and your going on there at Hawx Nest, especially with planning and your staff describing the project the way that they do. There's not a whole, it doesn't leave a whole lot to talk about. So I thought what I'd do is I put together a little overview and I'll just kind of, I'll briefly go through it. It won't take me a long time, but what I wanted to do was share with you what, kind of some progression of how the project, what happened from the time that they took over the already approved preliminary plat for Hawx Nest and decided to make the revisions that they have and present it as Aspen Trails. So basically, all I'm going to do is hit the high spots of those changes. And what's fascinating is to listen to your questions, early on, they are almost identical to some of the things that I'm going to touch on as to the changes that have been made. But Aspen Trails, the proposed plat, it's on the, one of the last remaining parcels that's available to, you know, for the originally approved preliminary plat for Hawx Nest, 470 lots. If you are familiar with the original application and based on what Tammy has stated, you know, there was, this application is requesting an additional 80 lots over and above what the remainder lots would be for the original Hawx Nest plat. I wanted to share with you kind of how they arrived at that number. It wasn't like they just said, okay, we need 80 more lots or we need 470 lots. What happened was through discussion with the planning department and with outside design consultants and the design team, there was some discussion about changing the way that the Prairie Trail is represented in the project. Originally, if you'll, if you remember, if you've seen the Hawx Nest preliminary plat that's approved, the lots don't have any frontage onto the Centennial, or, excuse me, the Prairie Trail. They are, there's a lot of right-of-way that's adjacent to the Prairie Trail throughout that entire approved preliminary plat. So a goal there was to take those, take that design and revise it so that, to provide a product that's a little different and have lots that backed up to the Prairie Trail. Your question about, two things, your questions were in regards to what the developer intends for how those lots back up to the Centennial Trail. There's been lengthy discussion about that. And first, it will be, it's been decided that fencing will be allowed and actually required. The style of fence will be probably shorter, darker, and non-site obscuring, if that makes any sense to you, mostly chain link. So envision black, dark green, dark brown, chain link of some sort, and all of the lots will have the ability to gate and have access to the, to the trail. So by changing the design of the subdivision to where the lots backed up to the Prairie Trail, they wanted to accomplish a couple of different things. One of them was how the trail is affected by the improvements that are made to the subdivision. Well, you know, it was envisioned that by having less right-of-way up against the trail that the trail would become quieter. The fact that if all, when all the houses are built out and with the fence available there, I mean, if you can envision traveling down the trail now with yards landscaped on both sides, you asked about a buffer. It's going to appear to be that much of a wider buffer because it will kind of carry through on into the properties that about the, about the trail, through the fencing. That was the first thing. The second thing was through the redesign and trying to eliminate some of the, I know that they ended up eliminating one of the cul-de-sacs. In fact, it was the only cul-de-sac in the original plat, but they were able to eliminate it. And trying to reduce the amount of right-of-way and infrastructure that was in the project, it just worked out that 470 lots worked. That's just the number that fit when the lot design was, you know, put in place. Next, I'll kind of touch on stormwater. The developer spent a lot of time driving around existing subdivisions, both in Coeur d'Alene, Post Falls, Hayden. And one of the first things that Melissa noticed was that street-side swales. She asked me, what are those? What's their function and why do they look like that? Well, then we showed her Coeur d'Alene Place as an example, showed her the example, the two different types of stormwater that you can provide with a subdivision design. And not only did she prefer the Coeur d'Alene Place design aesthetically, but, you know, from an engineering standpoint, you know, we believe that they function much better. They function at the beginning of the project, you know, when your swales are installed and your stormwater piping and your underdrains, they go in and they function immediately. Whereas street-side swales are kind of, you know, they're put in, they're halfway hydro-seated, and then the builder comes and builds a home and he's driving through it and it's not finished. And then the grass doesn't get, doesn't grow till later and the tree's not installed till after the fact. And so the street-side swell doesn't really even function as it's supposed to until later on. That's from an engineering standpoint. She just thought they're ugly. She just thought that the function of a landscape strip and having community swales that, you know, add to the open space of a, of a community and, you know, they, they function better and they just look better. So that was a major change, believe it or not, to a subdivision design. A subdivision that had already gone down the path, you know, of using a lot of the, you know, existing design parameters that were provided with the Hawx Nest plat. So the stormwater was revised in that fashion. Street design, Johns Hawk and Dowling, in essence, Carrington obviously because it's going to come off of Hanley, but the park is there. So looking at the overall project and trying to get a real good understanding and a feel for the access to the subdivision, Johns Hawk and Dowling are the two access roads, they're the two main access points to the subdivision. So it was decided that we would provide the space, the open space and the areas for a wider boulevard-type entry. It's proposed currently with a center median or island on the Johns Hawk side. Dowling was actually proposed that way also. We were asked to move that, that center divide and widen the road. If we chose to do it on Dowling, down to the next block from your engineering department. And I believe as we move forward, that will be the desire of the developer to have both entryways have that wider boulevard-style entry for a couple of different reasons. One, again, because of the aesthetic values, but also, you know, when you enter into a subdivision, it provides that type of construction, that type of entry provides almost a traffic calming effect as you enter into the subdivision. The trail, let's go back to that and how it intersects, it's going to interact with Carrington and with Hanley. From an engineering standpoint, this is probably the most exciting part about the whole project. And I've had a chance to talk to trails and with engineering. The fact that we're going to be able to, through the, you know, through the partnership with the city of Coeur d'Alene and with the developer, going to be able to provide an intersection, you know, as the subdivision progresses, that will allow for the bike traffic and the pedestrian traffic to move from one side to the other side unimpeded through the tunnel. You know, that's, that's a pretty exciting innovation. It'll be interesting for the trail, it'll be interesting for the city, you know, I think, I think a lot of people will be excited to see it. You know, and from a safety standpoint, you really can't argue that it's the proper way, you know, for the trail to, you know, progress through that intersection. You know, the trail has a couple of locations in the city that, you know, has traffic that crosses it. But, you know, I firmly believe that, you know, you mitigate your impacts the best way that you possibly can. And this is, I think this is going to be a good way to show that, you know, the developer is committed to that. Those are only a few items. You know, the developer understands, you know, through this entire process, obviously, we spent countless hours with the design review committee, hours with outside sources, looking at how this design can be revised, modified, made better. We know that there's other things about this preliminary plat that are extremely important. You know, the trail along Hanley, the trail along Hutter, the bike trails throughout the project, the amount of open space, the large park, you know, seven and a half acre park. There's been some extensive work done on some design. If some of you remember, I don't know if you have that information, but there's some, there's some extensive plans for what that park may look like, you know, as far as, you know, what the city will end up building there. But it's exciting to have that, again, that type of facility built with that partnership between the developer and the city. You know, I just wanted to mention that because we've been through that planning process, because we spent so much time going over all these issues, I mean, the development, the design review committee meetings were, I think there was a total of four or five of those, and, you know, and over the time, we made corrections and made changes and we'd go back and we'd revise. And, you know, I wanted to assure everybody here that, you know, obviously, the water's important, obviously, the sewer's important, obviously, you know, the street sections are important. But it's important for us that you understand how we arrived here, the reason why we made the changes that we made, and what the overall intent for the subdivision is. And I wanted to ensure that that effort that was put into the front end of this project is what you'll see as we progress from tonight and forward, as we move on into other phases and we work with other staff at the city. And then I'll stand for questions.
All right, okay.
A couple, a couple comments, if I could. First comment, I like what I heard you describe along that trail. A non-site obscuring, lower fence, chain link, something like that. My concern, looking at my packet, was a concern that that trail turns into a tunnel kind of thing, where it would lack a self-policing kind of thing, you know, the weeds, graffiti, it just becomes kind of a bad, a bad land. And I think you've handled that well. I like what I heard you say about stormwater. Not, not that street-side swales can't work and be done well, but I, kudos, you know, for trying something different and whatnot. And that's a, maybe a lead-in. Tell me if you would, there's an area just north of the trail, north of the park, I see a couple, it looked like a couple little, or it's really just one green area there. Then there's the one just under the three I see on the screen up there. Those little pockety park things, are those stormwater retention areas or, you know, is there a top lot or a bench or, you know, a place to run my dog around? I mean, is there usability there? And are you going to maintain it?
It's a good question. Obviously, the tracks will be maintained by the homeowners association. And, and that's what you'll find all of those are. I think there's an exhibit actually in your packet that shows that they're labeled as tracks. But your assumption that they are also a part of the stormwater is correct. So what you're looking at there is a combination, obviously, it's overall, it's the open space. But some of those areas, and, you know, I could point out several of them just because I know kind of the general location of where they'd be needed. But, you know, on, on either side of, you know, your intersections, you typically are going to find, you know, where there's a lot and then there's some space between the end lot and the road, basically the side yard. Instead of the side yard being up against the right-of-way, you take that area and you widen it out a little bit and you make it the size that's required to handle stormwater. And, you know, if, you know, we were pretty fortunate in the design. We got a great design engineer and he spent a lot of time deciding how this was all going to flow and, you know, where to put the storm ponds. And so what you see there is, again, a combination of both. A lot of the green areas there you see though are not. You know, a lot of the, you know, part of, over by PP6, that's just open space on both sides of Carrington. There will be, you know, obviously, some swale-type construction along Carrington that will be more similar to street-side, but you've all seen that. The wider the right-of-way, the wider the road, the less steep the swale sides are, or the better that it fits with its surrounding area. You brought up another point that I should, I should touch on the question that, is it Bowlby?
Mm-hmm.
You had a question about the trail and what was the other question you had?
Maybe I can help you. It was on the trail, it was on the lighting, it was on the...
It'll come to me. I, it's not...
Buffering on the trail, vegetative buffering or anything like that, but no, there was something else.
I answered that question. There was something else, it'll come to me.
Yeah.
Two other questions and I'll pass. Tammy mentioned the 19 conditions and she indicated that the developer is familiar with them. Does that, does familiar mean that you acknowledge them and you are good with them?
Yeah, all 19 of them. I mean, it wasn't just all of a sudden that was laid in front of us. That was discussion after discussion after discussion, meeting after meeting. And yes, they're aware of every one of them and have agreed to all of them.
Okay. Lastly, for now, kind of related to that, I guess you're comfortable with the phasing. And I ask that with a little bit of concern in that it seems like the initial construction to extend Carrington down to Hanley, the cost of that spread over 35 units, that's going to be kind of a burden. And you're good with that?
Me personally, if it was my check, no. But we've had the discussion with the developer. We've talked about the phasing of one, phasing of two, and the requirement for Carrington. That comes from way back. That requirement was a part of the Hawx Nest plat. So I got to tell you, it was, it was an immediate discussion before they ever purchased the property. So throughout this whole process of coming up with the phasing plan and understanding what, what the requirements for Carrington would be, yes, they are good with that, yes.
So, so we won't be back to talk re-phasing?
No.
Thank you.
If they just, you know, the answer to your question, because you seem to be familiar with what the ramifications of that type of phasing plan would be, would be to build phase one and phase two at the same time.
Mm-hmm.
So that's an option.
Right.
They might plat two phases instead of one. And how, you know, things are looking pretty good out there right now, so.
Good, good. Thank you.
I do have some questions, of course.
Okay.
Backtracking, of course. Backtracking, the open or the green spaces that you were talking about, they are in between lots. Will they be public access?
They're, yes. I mean, they're tracks that are maintained by the homeowners association. So unless the homeowners association was to stipulate that they, you know, you had to stay off of them. But, you know, I'm familiar with several subdivisions and homeowners associations typically don't restrict access to grassy areas.
Right, I was, because they look as if they could be very nice ways of walking to get to the different streets, but I didn't know if there'd be public access.
Some of those actually are public access. The ones that you might be looking at there that access, they're, they're called mid-block.
Right, the mid-block tracks.
Yeah, those, those will have access. Those are public access, actually.
Okay, that's what I was, I was wondering. All right, that's what I was asking.
The greens throwing you off a little bit because you're thinking grass, then actually there'll probably be a sidewalk through there.
Okay, okay. And then when you spoke about a boulevard, are you meaning that you're going to put plantings in the middle of the road?
If it's wide enough, yes, if it will accommodate it. And we've had some discussion with engineering about, FIRE requested that the lane width be a certain width for safety and access. And overall, that requirement and that discussion with engineering led to an actual wider planter strip in the center. So that wider planter strip in the center will now accommodate the planting. Because we showed trees on the landscape plan and the question was brought up, are you sure that's wide enough for trees? So we reevaluated it, we made it a little wider.
And then I'm noticing that you're flowing into the original Hawx Nest right now with your roads. Everything's connected, so there should be a nice flow. And I'm looking at these homes against Hanley, and I should have asked staff about this, but I know that Hanley may be a major arterial or a very main arterial. And I might be wrong in that as far as the overall package for the whole area. Is it Hanley or is it going to be Atlas as far as the main arterial off of the freeway? Because that was talked about as far as a main arterial. For the metro?
You know, are you thinking about Hutter, the bypass?
I'm sorry, not Hanley. Yes, I apologize. I'm thinking of Hutter, apologize. That's where my brain was working. Okay, no, you're right, it's Hutter.
There has been some discussion and comments about that. In fact, the Hutter interceptor, I believe, bypass, yeah, the Hutter bypass.
Yeah.
That's one of the reasons why you don't see any access from the subdivision out to Hutter.
Okay.
East.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
Because of the future nature of Hutter.
That's what I was asking.
Yes, and the highway district restricted it, restricted the access.
Well, yeah, I see that, but I guess that's what I meant. It is Hutter I'm talking about. And I just wondered about those...
And we have...
Those homes, how you want to back that up?
Yeah, there is actually a 20-foot wide buffer strip there. So you'll have the rear yard fencing, 20 feet, 10 of it landscaping, 10 of it... So you'll have the, the rear yard fencing, 20 feet, 10 of it landscaping, 10 of it bike path, if the bike path ever gets built.
So I was on the right track.
You are.
I just wasn't looking at the right street.
You are.
Okay. That's what I wanted to ask you. All right? Okay? Anybody else?
Anybody else? All right. Okay, that's it for now. You'll have some time at the end for some rebuttal, if you need it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll take public testimony now. There's a sign-up sheet in the back. If you haven't already signed, you can go back to the table there and sign the sign-up sheet. So members of the public will have five minutes to testify on this matter, and you can step up to the podium there and state your name and address, then I will swear you in. So first off, I have John Rungy. Is John Rungy here? Would you like to come up? Just state your name and address, sir.
John Rungy, 800 North 23rd Street.
Okay, and do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, this is for the other development.
Oh, that one that was continued?
Yes.
Okay. Well, as I mentioned earlier, that one was continued until, what was it, June 10th?
Yes.
Yeah, so you'd probably want to come back for that one.
Okay.
Sure, no problem.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have, let's see, Jim Tilton? Did I get that right? It looks like Tilton.
Probably, maybe, but I have a graphic saying like that.
Oh, okay, sir. All right. And Tom Andrell.
Tom Andrell, 2875 East Spiglas Court, Court of Lane.
Okay, Tom, and do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay.
I do. So I came here tonight for the purposes of supporting this project, and I'll, and I'll tell you why in a minute, but myself and a partner developed the landings over the last 11 years, so we are the immediate neighbor to the north. And, and for point of clarity, about six months ago, or perhaps a year ago, we rezoned a portion of the landings that immediately abuts this project into R8. So your map that showed a little C-17L pink little square, and the yellow R3 is now all R8. So, so the zoning is, is, is consistent with what we have. And I think that the, the project, as it's designed, addresses the needs of our residents in access to the trail. And I think that, as many of you may know, we're on our last phase at the landings right now. We should be finished with construction in there in the next 30 to 45 days. So the fact that Downing will become a, more of a boulevard with some bike paths and access for folks from our area down to this project and to the trail, I think, is beneficial. But beyond that, I think it's important to remember, when we started the landings, our, we had limited capacity in what was called the Atlas Basin for sewer. And the then-owner of the project south of us, the Hawksnest piece, and ourselves got together, and with the help of Warren and others, we cooked up this plan to take the railroad tracks out and build the trail you now have, and create a forest main and a regional lift station that provides sewer down to the, to the city plant and provides connectivity to that whole part of town with a wonderful trail. And none of that couldn't have, could have happened without the overall volume of units to help pay for that. We couldn't have afforded to do that ourselves. I mean, this was well over a million dollars we spent to, to build that regional lift station. And the lift station is designed to handle the capacity, certainly and above, what they're proposing. So the infrastructure was built for what's being proposed, and I, and I think it's important for all of us to remember how, how that got built, with, with two very large projects to help fund it and create that wonderful trail we all enjoy. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I have Scott, I can't quite pronounce the last name, is it Allet, or? Did you want to testify? Okay, come on up. State your name and address.
Scott Allet, 3886 West Gazelda. My house actually will go up against Hanley. It's currently not developed there. So I think at this time, or...
Let me ask you real quick, just for procedure here, do you swear the testimony you're going to give is will be the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay.
I was wondering, so Hanley's only going to go up to Carrington for, until the rest of the development is put into place? Is that correct?
I believe so.
It's not going to go all the way through?
Eventually, it's going to go all the way through. For now...
So there'll just be a lot of traffic coming down, thinking they can go through to Hutter. So there'll be some kind of signage telling people, you know, why waste your time going all the way down there when you're just going to have to go around back through the development? Because it's going to mostly serve just the construction.
So for now, and I'm going to get it out of my league a little bit here, but it's going to be essentially local access. At some point in the future, it will go all the way out to Hutter.
Okay. A timeline on that?
That's going to be driven by development, how quickly it develops.
And then the other thing was, with the more houses and developments, they're going to be on the trail, they're going to put more people on the trail. I think there's going to be a bigger chance for some accidents, that I've seen a lot of motorized vehicles on those trails, eight, four-wheelers, cars, motorcycles. I've called the police department several times to come out to address this, haven't seen them. So you're going to have more people on the trail, there's no place for these people to run out, get out of the way, you know, when with strollers and whatnot, so. If there could be some kind of a blockade that can be removed, so your city vehicles can get down the road when they need to, but to maybe, somehow hinder all this other traffic that seems to be going down. Even though I know there's signs there saying your vehicle could be impounded, you know, if you're caught, but I see it on a weekly basis. So that could be something that could be addressed.
That's a good point. It's probably an enforcement issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're supposed to have motorized vehicles.
Well, then you have a tunnel, you're in a tunnel, where are you going to go? You're really constricted, especially the size of the tunnel, if it's only big enough.
Bull, the, there are no pegged ballards?
There are probably over where Atlas intersects with the, the trail there.
Uh-huh.
But it's not large enough to keep out of, you know, four-wheelers. Motorcycle probably get through no matter what you do, but I've seen, you know, full-size vehicles going through there.
Okay.
It's just something I wanted to bring up.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, then I have Ben Glass. Is Ben here? Okay. I think that was for the other hearing, too. Melissa Wells?
No comments.
Okay. Thank you. You're in favor, but no comments. Kevin and Jenny Potts. Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else I didn't call who'd like to testify here on this matter? Okay, sir, come on up. You state your name and address.
David Bice, 4017 Calzato Drive, Orleans.
Okay, David, and do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay. Go ahead, and then when you get done, you'll probably have a sheet for you to sign there.
Sure.
But go ahead, thank you.
Just wanted to start with a statement that I think we're overdeveloping the city. This city was great when it was the nice, quiet town it was, and with all these projects going on, I just feel that the, it's changing so much. We're just overdeveloping the town. But that aside, my only big concern is Talon and Hanley. When Hanley goes through, and I noticed the Canterbury, or whatever the proposed street is for the development, looks like it's going to be the only southern exit for that development. But right now, Talon is the only southern exit for Hawksnest, as well as a lot of people from Landings use Talon to exit onto handling, Hanley. I'm just concerned with the proximity of Calzato to Hanley, that distance is probably three to four car lengths. I'm just wondering if there's any consideration for maybe a three-way stop sign at that intersection? I know there's already a traffic light at Atlas, and they're talking about a traffic light at the Canterbury, but that, I, I'm concerned that Talon's going to get backed up with people trying to exit onto Hanley to make left turns with the increased traffic flow on Hanley.
Okay.
May I ask him a question?
Sure. Hold on just a minute.
Excuse me, sir. May I, I just have a question for you. Talon is in Hawksnest.
Hawksnest, correct.
Right. And so, is it an east-west? I'm just trying to find it.
It's north-south.
North-south, okay. And I don't think we have it on our map.
Go to page 12 in the packet.
Is it on page 12? Thank you. I just wanted to take a look at it before you left, just to see, so you're having, okay. I still don't see it. Industrial Loop?
It's, follow Hanley.
I got it, Hanley, okay.
It's where Hanley ends now.
Until where? Hanley goes into the red line?
Yes, that's, okay.
And then just north of that, you see Talon.
T-A-L-O-N?
Yeah.
So you're having trouble right now on that?
No, right now, it's not because it, Hanley ends right there, but my concern is when that is open
Right.
It's going to be a busy street.
Right.
Okay, so you're wondering if there might be a three-way stop there or something instead of Hanley
Eventually.
Going through.
If that's a consideration, because I can see traffic backing up on Talon, trying to make a left turn when through traffic is going on Hanley.
On Hanley, uh-huh. And that's the only north-south road that you have from the original Hawksnest going into Hanley, am I correct?
Correct, that's the only exit, southern exit.
Okay, so that'll be something that we could address with Hanley. I think that would be a good discussion piece.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else? All right, do you have any rebuttal you'd like to do?
Again?
No, you're still under oath.
Cut it.
I think that's what they say on Perry Mason, isn't it?
(laughing). I just, just briefly wanted to talk about Mr. Bice, I think, David Bice, I believe it was. The, the Talon intersection, and as it relates to Hanley, and the Carrington intersection, and it relates to Hanley, I'd like, maybe if we could show him on a map, but there is several hundred feet between those two, it's not two or three car lengths. So, and I, I think that's what I understood from his comments, was the close proximity and the relationship of the two intersections, and there, maybe just on the map, it, it might not be represented just the way, you know, he believes it to be. There will be, you know, quite a bit of space between the two intersections. This is somewhat deceiving, because, you know, the section that you're showing there of Hanley to the east is not built, and he's correct. The Hanley currently is built to Talon, and then it, of course, dead-ends. And so that section, not only, when these phases are started, you know, Mr. Ingalls expressed concern about the amount of infrastructure that's going to be constructed in the early process of the subdivision, but Carrington and Hanley have to be built at the very beginning of this project in order to have that, that access to the south. So, you know, and, you know, I don't know, you, traffic patterns are kind of funny to predict, but the additional access from John's Hawk, from the Hawksnest that exists, to the Aspen Trails that will be, and the Carrington connection down to Hanley, I think it might help alleviate some of, some of the concerns. I think he's correct, and, you know,
On Talon.
People right now are probably more prone to Talon, but they'll probably look for other sources, too, when those other streets are built.
Right.
There will be a considerable amount of space between those two intersections. That's all I have.
Is it, you think it's about a block, or a block and a half from where Carrington is?
Is Gordon still here?
Yeah, he is, no, it's hundreds of feet.
Oh, okay, so it's much...
Probably four miles between Carrington and Talon.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's quite a ways.
Okay. Yeah, it is deceptive.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gordon, in regards to that, I assume at some point, maybe you can come up here real quick, but I, I assume regarding his concerns, at some point down the road, it is difficult to protect, predict the traffic flows if that intersection warranted some type of a, a stop, or a three-way stop, or something, the engineering probably would look at it at that time, right?
Sure, we would look at what would be warranted at that time, if they're, you know, if you have trouble getting on or off, left turns, whatever, we'd, we'd evaluate it at that point.
And the question the gentleman spoke about, you know, as Hanley phases its way over to, no, over to Hutter.
Hutter.
And for a while, you know, it's going to morph over the years. You know, it's going to be non-signalized only to Carrington, then it's going to be signalized, then it's going to go over to Hutter. It may be, there may be some city things that you might have to step in there
Right.
To alleviate, you know, kind of whatever the proper word is to say, not, not a thorough dead-end, or whatever you use, or, you know, there may be some things that you, you might have to fine-tune during those years.
That's right, sure. We don't have a crystal ball, but we are reactive and...
That's fixable.
Yeah.
In your mind.
Gordon, I have a question in regards to that, as far as traffic in Hanley, because I know we've talked about putting Hanley all the way through years ago. But, so projecting out with Atlas, with Hanley, with this number of possibilities of quite a few traffic, people coming out onto Hanley, when it does, for example, get developed east, and that goes to Atlas, am I correct? Are you, what, what kicks in a signaling? Is it more traffic count?
At Hudler, at Hutter and...
Well, it'd either be at Hutter or Atlas, either end, once Hanley's put in.
Hanley does go to Atlas, and there is a signal there right now.
There is a signal on, on Hanley right now.
At Atlas.
Okay. So at Hutter, then what would draw that? Same thing?
Right, so the same thing. And we're requiring them to do the warrants at Hutter, and that's really in response to the requirement of the Post Falls Highway District, because it's in their jurisdiction.
Right.
Those warrants would probably be based on existing traffic, or the projections that have been done with the regional model.
Right, that's what I was wondering with that.
Right.
If there's any feedback on that at all.
For, you know, 2014, we wouldn't do it for 2030 build-out, we would do it for,
Right.
You know, whatever year they connect Hanley through. And it's, it's, there's like eight different kinds of warrants, but the ones that particularly apply would be if there's any significant delay on any one of the movements, like a left turn on or off, then that starts to drive the warrant for a signal.
Okay. So again, you're stating that Hanley does not have to be finished until we're pretty much done with all the phasing to Hutter. Am I correct in stating that?
No, I would say we're about two-thirds of the way through the project before they construct Hanley.
All of Hanley has to be done.
Correct.
Essentially. But right now, as we speak, Carrington to Hanley is not built out yet, and that's something they have to do in Phase One and Two, correct? To Hanley, and then you can...
In Phase One.
In Phase 1, and then they can take a left and go to Hanley, and go to the light, and get out. Okay, so that isn't driven. All right. Okay, that's all I wanted to clarify, because I didn't have that quite clean in my head yet.
Okay, no worries.
Thank you.
All right. So that's that. Is anyone thinking about a motion?
I'd make one.
Sure.
I'd even make findings, maybe. I got to learn how to do that at some point.
I'll help you, if you need help.
Perhaps a motion and then findings? Is that how it works? I would motion that...
Well, usually you do the findings as part of the motion, unless we have the attorney do the findings.
Right.
So let me try this. So the motion would be, having heard this matter before the Planning Commission on May 13th from an applicant requesting approval of item S-514, a request for the preliminary plat of Aspen Trails, a 470-lot preliminary plat subdivision in the R8 zoning district, applicant being Core Development for plus or minus 144-acre area between Atlas Road and Hutter Road south of the landings. Findings would include B1 through B8. Finding B8A that the preliminary plat has met the conditions as attested to by the city engineer. B8B that the provision for sidewalk streets, alleys, right-of-way easements, street lighting, fire protection, planting, drainage, pedestrian, and bicycle facilities and utilities are adequate, is what we heard. B8C that the preliminary plat is in conformance with the comp plan. And basically, if you flip to page 9, in my thinking, it touches on all of those items listed there, 1.11 through 3.08, rather, 4.06 favorably. B8D that the public interest will be served. Based on those findings, or on those comp plan elements that I cited on pages 9 and 10. B8E that the engineering elements of the preliminary plat have been met. B8F that the lots proposed in the plat do meet the requirements for minimum lot size and frontages and density, et cetera. B9 that the proposal would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood. We heard favorable testimony from the landings. B10 that the deviations cited are not a hardship, that being this knuckles and the slight deviation from the frontages in those knuckles. And that deviation would not materially detriment the public welfare, et cetera. And so the Planning Commission pursuant to the aforementioned finds that the request of Core Development for preliminary plat of approval as described in the application should be approved at this time incorporating the 19 conditions that the applicant has acknowledged and indicates that they will comply with. That being the motion.
And thank you, Commissioner.
Second.
Wonder if we have a second? We have a second by Messina. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, Shanna.
Bowlby?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Messina?
Yes.
Okay, so that's approved. S-5-14 is unanimously approved. Warren, with regards to the workshop we were discussing, do we need to continue anything, or will you just reschedule that?
So we had a couple of discussion items we had on the agenda for tonight based on some requests from the last meeting. And Peter, I think, was asking for a couple of those discussions, so I think we might be better served rolling this over to the next meeting. We're scheduling a lunchtime meeting. I would like to have a chance to sit down with you and walk through the new subdivision code a little bit, because you're going to shortly be having a subdivision or two come through with a new set of findings that you'll want to have your hands around. So if it's all right with you, I think we might work on setting up something, maybe at noon or whatever, we can make everybody's schedule work, and then we'll notice up a workshop.
Mr. Chair, I would so recommend that.
How soon, okay, just a second. How soon are we going to be having the new findings? Would the June hearings have that, or is that under the old format?
That should be under the old format. So you've got one more go-round before you get the new set of findings, most likely. And that sort of depends on when the next subdivision application comes in. But at the point that you submit your application, the rules in effect on that date is the rules that we hear your application against. So the next month's hearing item that has a subdivision will deal with our old findings. And then my guess is, from that point forward, we're going to have the new subdivision code to work with.
And I guess we'd know that at the end of May, when the next one is. So what's the easiest for everybody? We have, we could, we could hold a workshop for some discussion items like that after the June meeting while we're already here. Don't know how late that meeting will go. There's a couple items on there. It could go on a little while, or it may not be too bad. Or do we want to schedule a separate noon meeting? Sometimes, you know, it's hard to get everyone together, you know, when we schedule those separate meetings, so... A question on, I agree with you, Chairman. Is the only item that's on next agenda, the fluid item?
So you have the continued items that will have five sets of findings, and then you'll have one special use permit in addition to that.
Do we have a second meeting in June?
The Commissioner might ask for the attorney to do the findings on that one hearing, too, that has five sets of findings.
My guess is you'll be asking staff to do the findings, because there's a number of them.
Yeah, because that's so big.
Yeah. So that could happen.
Do we have a second meeting in June?
Excuse me. No. We could have a second meeting, or while we're, since we're all here, you know, if it doesn't go too late on June 10th, we could do our workshop then. How long do you anticipate the workshop taking? Is that an hour?
That'll sort of be driven by you. The items that we have on here are not terribly long. The one that may take some time, I think, would be working through the subdivision a little bit and getting familiar with what the new findings look like.
So what if, your good question on when the new findings come into effect, it's not until the July one, correct? So what if we went to the 10th of June, planning to do an after-the-meeting deal? And if it went longer, it got to be a midnight deal, we could always decide then to have a thing, and we'd still have a month to get that done as a standalone meeting. Would we want to try it after the June 10th meeting, if the meeting gets over before it's too late? And then have a, we could talk about a second meeting in June, like you're talking about, if we can't do it on the 10th?
I would say, like, you know, just mention if the first meeting doesn't go along, fine, we'll do it. If it goes too long, then we'll push it to our second meeting, that we don't have anything on the agenda, or something in between.
Or reset a meeting at that time.
Right.
Does that make sense? We'll try for the June 10th meeting if it doesn't go too late? And then if that gets to be pretty involved and drags on, we'll set a time then, a noon meeting, or maybe a second meeting in June?
Great, we'll roll these items over then.
Okay. Great, you guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Is anybody interested in a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Bowlby. Wonder if there'd be a second?
Second.
Okay, good. Second by Ingalls. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? All right, so that's unanimous, so we're adjourned.
Thank you very much.